Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order tonight. This is Tuesday, May 26th, the day off of our usual schedule because of Memorial Day, so I hope everybody had a wonderful three-day weekend. I hope everybody got a three-day weekend, but maybe some of you worked. Okay. Right, we are going to start tonight's meeting off with two good celebrations. One is our retirees, and we have a number of retirees with many, many years of service. We're going to start with that, and then we're going to follow it with our High School, College, and Career Advisory Board, which personally has been a fun group for me to work with. So Superintendent Metz, you want to start out with our retirees?
Good evening, Board members and members in the audience and those at home. We get to celebrate tonight a group of individuals who are retiring from working in St. Louis Park School District. Combined, they have worked for over 275 years in St. Louis Park. It's hard to even quantify the number of students that they've affected and the good works that they've done. Before this meeting, we had a reception for them down in the cafeteria, and we recognized them, and each of them are donating a book in their honor in one of our libraries here at school, and we just cannot thank them enough. We'd like to have them come forward, and we'll award them with a certificate. I'm going to read all the names of all the retirees. When you hear your name, please come forward. Some are here, and some were not able to be here, but I'll read all the names. John Bennett has been working on the grounds crew for over 27 years. And John, just stand behind us, well, you will take a picture when we're all done. Peter Redman, high school language arts teacher for 24 years. Kathleen Curlin is not here tonight, but she has taught at Aquila for the last nine Judy Anderson has been a reading specialist at Susan Lindgren Elementary School, among others, for the last 27 years. Donna Leckler is here tonight. She is the lead cook at Aquila, and she's worked in St. Louis Park for 30 years. Carol Westrude has been a cook also in the school district for 26 years. Cheryl Arnold was not able to make it, but she's been the secretary to the building and grounds crew for 24 years. Julie Mulford is not here tonight. She's been a childcare educator in St. Louis Park for the last 34 years. Karen Robb is here. She's been, she currently is the behavior specialist at Peter Hobart. She has worked in St. Louis Park for 29 years. Gloria Wolf is here. She's been a pair professional at Aquila for the last 26 years. And finally, Carol Johnson is not here. She's the high school secretary for the past 10 years, and she's retiring as well. So as I said, we cannot thank these wonderful people enough for all the work they provided this district, all the students that they have helped. Let's give them one more round of applause. Now, you're not done yet. You have about a week and a half. You have to be here tomorrow.
Our next spotlight is, as I mentioned, of the High School, College, and Career Advisory Board, and I'm going to introduce Cara Mueller, who has coordinated this from the high school. Cara?
With great honor, I recognize the individuals, these fantastic professionals who have come full-on and helped us over the past few years. We've had advisory boards running for many, many years, but it wasn't until Greg and I revamped the whole academy pathways, and we hired a fantastic facilitator and redesigned the work of our academy advisory boards. And with honor, I introduce our hard-working Carrie Jensen and the rest of our advisory board.
Thank you. My name is Carrie Jensen. If my advisory board can join us up here. This has been one of the most dynamic, talented group here. They're passionate about preparing all of our students to connect them with a great future. I'm going to read off the names. Some of them are here, some of them are not. Susan Abelson, Dan Albright, Steve Casey, Jeremiah Sherwin, Kathy Cranbrook, Sam DePaola, Robin Elias, Sarah Ferguson, Tim Jensen. Susan Kratz, Rob Lowe, Kelly McCullough, Russ Frankel, Gino Giovinelli, Dr. Kevin Gioli, Ann Hayden, Linay Hagerty, Steve Parsons, Susan Robineer, Lori Ryan, Devon Sales, Stephen Sullivan, Peter Mahalov, Julie Schweitzer. Thank you, Julie. Thank you so much. A round of applause for this dynamic group. I think we want to do a group picture? Picture?
Yes.
It includes the business members we just shared, the post-secondary. In addition to our staff, the high school teachers comes to every meeting with us, small group working, and we really appreciate that collaboration. So please recognize Tim Donahue, Jessica Gust, Martha Ortman. You'll be receiving your recognition soon. Angela Jacob is also here. Thank you. Sophia Ross, Jenna Splotzider, Jeff Cohen, Carmen Garland, Trevor Paulson, Jacob Utides, Mark Miller. Thank you. Think we're going to do one group shot together?
And we should say that we do have a certificate for Carrie Jensen, who has done all of And with that, we'll go back to our regular agenda. Members of the advisory board, you are welcome to stay all evening because your advice is welcome, and you also may leave and go down to the orchestra concert or anything else that's going on. So we'll get started now, and feel free to stay, but we understand, feel free to leave as well. I'm going to go through our agenda for the evening tonight, which is the call to order, approval of the agenda, open forum opportunity, the superintendent's report, discussion items, and there are quite a few, and that includes the college and career readiness update, and I forgot, we've got that on the agenda, so advisory board, please stick around so you can hear that. The St. Louis Park Middle School annual report, 2015-16 probationary non-renewals, 2015 unrequested leave of absence, our 2015 health and safety annual budget and report approval, policy development. We have a first reading of a new policy, 427, which is workload limits for certain special education teachers. Next item is policy development, second reading for policy 799, post issuance debt compliance. Then we have the 2016-17 school calendar discussion, and a school district bid opening report, followed by the consent agenda, and then we have our action agenda, which includes the policy development second reading for policy 799, post issuance debt compliance. We have the 2016-17 school calendar approval, approval of the 2015 health and safety annual budget and report, the approval of the school district bids, and the 2015-16 staffing approval for probationary and nonrenewal placements, and the 2015 proposed unrequested leave of absence approval, followed by communications and transmittals and adjournment. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Second? I heard a motion by Bruce and a second by Nancy. And all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries, six-zero. Next is open forum, and do we have anybody signed up for open forum? Is there anybody in the audience who would like to make a comment on anything tonight that isn't already scheduled to make a comment later on in the agenda? All right, nobody on open forum? So we will move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Metz?
As the board knows, we are well underway in our strategic planning process. We have four action teams that are developing our work for the next five years, and the action teams met today. This was their third meeting. They have five meetings in all scheduled. Today was the third meeting. Next Thursday, actually, two days from today, is a big day because the action teams are going to take the work that they've done to date and present it to the core team on Thursday morning, and that will be a very important meeting. And then next week, the action teams will begin meeting again. They'll meet their fourth time next week, fifth time in June. We are still on schedule to bring back a proposal, proposed new strategic plan to the board at the June 22nd meeting. So a good meeting today, very intense. My brain is tired from all the conversations and decision-making today, but the work goes on. It's very good work. I'm excited to be part of the process, and we're looking forward to completing it and bringing it to you on June 22nd.
Thank you. We look forward to that as well. Our next item on the agenda is the College and Career Readiness Academy Advisory Board, and board members, this board, school board members, you have some additional materials at your desk, and what, is it? Okay, then I'm going to call on again Cara Mueller to start off the presentation on the group's work. And with her are Greg Goddard and Scott Myers, another teacher, and our principal. And is Carrie part of this as well, too?
Not yet.
Not yet? All right. We'll start with Principal Myers, I guess.
All right. Well, I just wanted to start off again for thanking the group that you see in front of you here. Our advisory board has been amazing this year in terms of making connections for our students. The academic advisory board, in a lot of ways, was pretty visionary, thanks to the work from Cara and Greg. Years ago, they started working on this, and it's tied nicely into not only the career and college readiness legislation, but throughout the past year, the experiential opportunities, the mentoring, the support, and the curriculum writing that's actually occurring with teachers, from both people in the professional community and also people who are working in post-secondary, has been a real asset for the high school. What has been created here is going to fit into the strategic planning that Mr. Metz was discussing earlier. It fits in really nicely with two of the areas that I can think of offhand, which are some strategies and some of the core values. So more importantly, I think it matches St. Louis Park in terms of the community coming to surround the students and to give them experience and support. So with that, I'll turn it over to some of the more important details that you came here for, but I just wanted to thank them again.
The first thing we're going to do is, as Greg and I are just going to remind everybody that the work of this academy advisory board is actually helping us to strive for the world's best workforce. It is a requirement of the world's best workforce to implement a K-12 career and college readiness plan. And with the work we have going on developmentally and implementation-wise with these professionals, we are striving to work towards the best workforce plan.
Hi, I'm Greg Goddard. Both Cara and I had a vision when we started to develop the academy system, the academy programs of study, that we would not only be developing career and college-ready programs of study and working in a content-based area with our faculty, but also broadening it out to bring the industry and business professionals into the school to enhance the experience for our students. And one of the things that we envisioned was having this advisory board. And we're thrilled that here we are now, two years into this process, and it's a vibrant growing, certainly not yet completed. It's always a work in progress, but we're just thrilled by the impact that this has had on high school students. And I think, in some ways, it's a model for things that can be done in other areas of the school. Because what we've done here, and we presented to you a year ago, looking at what the legislation was asking about having a career and college-ready plan for every public school in the state, is we have implemented a model that brings together business and industry. It brings together post-secondary. It brings together parents and community and the school board members, and those are all aspects of our advisory. All of those constituents are part of this advisory board. And we're just really thrilled by the energy and the impact that, again, that this has had on students throughout the year. And we meet three times a year to plan activities, but with, of course, Carrie's guidance, she's also making connections on a weekly basis to bring them into the classroom. And some of the people who have done that are here tonight to share their experience.
And so, before I turn it over to the real people who run the board, which is our business professionals and our community leaders, I just want to also point out in the district alignment, the career and college readiness plan, the impact this board has already had. There are seven key elements in a career and college readiness plan, and out of those seven key elements, one is the personal learning plan, career explorations, 21st century skills, community partnerships, college access, all forms of post-secondary opportunities, and experiential learning. And I am going to turn it over to the true board and the deliverers of all this information, and you are going to see firsthand how all seven of these elements are being met with the work of this board. So I'm going to turn it over to Carrie Jensen and our very first chair, Mr. Rob Lowe.
Thank you, Cara. And that's Rob Lowe with two Bs, so there's no confusion. I want to thank the school board for supporting this initiative, as well as Cara, Greg, and Carrie for all the work they put in, and the board themselves. As has been mentioned a number of times, you can see a picture of some of the board members there. About half the board is comprised of business and industry representatives, which is really important as we kind of look at career and college readiness. About one-quarter of the board is comprised of post-secondary representatives, and about one-quarter of the board is comprised of secondary representatives. So it's a very important cross-section that we have, and to be able to inform one another and keep up to speed. We also, I should mention, that some of the members, while they fall in one of those three categories, are also parents who are involved as the members, and students. And we're also looking at trying to get students more involved in the future. And we basically have been working at this for a couple of years, and when we first started, we had three basic goals to work on. We wanted to have this group be an action-oriented group, wanted it to be an advisory group, and wanted it to be a group that could help us with networking. So we're going to highlight just a few of the accomplishments. We don't have a lot of time. We have a lot of slides to cover, so we'll keep it somewhat short.
Does that mean we can move on?
Yeah, that means we're going to move on. The first year, we met, and we had 10 goals that we were trying to focus on, and we realized in the course of that, that that was a lot of goals to try to focus on. So one of the real challenges, or one of the real opportunities we had, were to attract board members that we really were intentionally looking to draw into the board to give the advice and the insights as necessary to make St. Louis Park students successful. Excuse me. And so we recruited about 40 members, and then we also decided, well, we should have an executive board. So we recruited that as well. And I think what we'll do is really kind of focus on what our attention was on the second year. Remember, I said we kind of started with 10 broad goals? So the second year, we wanted to focus on staff development, curriculum alignment, and community relations. And basically, the staff development piece really had to do with working, oh, thank you.
While he's sipping, yes? I'm losing my voice. Stand over there. I did want to showcase a couple of things. When we have hosted these meetings, the first year, we brought the business members into the school so they can see what the school was like. And then the second year, we brought the staff out of the school. So we met at Methune, we met at Normandale, we met at Martin Williams, because we thought it was important for the staff to get out. It's, you know, it feels more creative, and then they see what they're setting the students up for in the workplace. The other thing I wanted to mention was, when we said, we call it an advisory board, but action is a big part of it. So most of our members have gone into the classroom. They needed to see that what you can accomplish in 44 minutes versus a work meeting that could last two hours, see the students, and build a relationship with the staff, and every one of them has said, we will come back, and every presenter that has come in said, you have great students, and we'll be back.
And you're going to hear some of that highlighted here just in a few minutes. And one of the goals that we had at each of our meetings, we had an opportunity for the district to give updates so we could see how the work we were doing was aligning what the district was doing. We also then spent some time having feedback from the various, we had broken into different advisory pathway groups, and there's a lot of activity that occurs, so we had some opportunity for each of those groups to kind of feed back or share what they had been doing and the accomplishments they had. And then every meeting, we had a sort of a task where these groups could talk and try to basically help fine-tune the curriculum to help the students be really ready for the workforce, the realities of the workforce, as well as some of the rigors of classroom study.
This is just a quick snapshot of what we did accomplish over the past two years. We ended up with eight experiences off-campus, engaging 296 of our students, 50 events in classroom, over 1,000 students, and for our career and college readiness event days, I have somebody's head in the way. 75 business partners and 1,500 students. This made a huge impact on the kids. We, after each one, we checked in with the teachers, we checked in with the students, we got feedback. They loved it. I was at almost every single one, and I was just amazed at the talent that comes in and is presenting. Each member came in dressed, professional, great role models, very, very engaging with the students, and that was one of the biggest feedback, is the students said they engaged every single one of us. This was one example. The University of Minnesota Medical Lab came, and again, this was from another parent. The kids loved this one because they got to get up and move around. So they started with a quick presentation that talked, gave some technical terms. The kids got to do a lab. It was on infectious disease, so there was a lot of great conversation around there. And then when they sat down again, they talked through, if you did this many years at the, learning some of this, you would get this much money, four years, six years. So it was a nice, broad spectrum of what they showcased, and again, the students really enjoyed having this opportunity to learn about what you would do in a medical lab.
And one of the, not only were we focusing on curriculum or learning in the classroom, the particular topics or areas, but we're also focusing on development. So this actually is a presentation that was given by Taylor Larson of REV Consulting, and it really was sharing with students how they could make a presentation, giving some cues and tips, talking about high energy, good eye contact, the use of visuals. And just want to stress that we're not only focusing on academics, but personal development as well, and this is one of the ways that we're able to do that.
One added point to this one is, the way that he set this up is exactly what Taylor used in large corporations. So it was very relevant. When the kids were sitting around, he said, this is what I do with the CEOs and executives. It's the exact same process. So I think the kids felt, I mean, that's really important for them to know that this is exactly what they'd be doing once they go into work. And then lastly, we brought students to Piper Jaffray. Again, the panel members, first of all, majority, many of the people that worked there were from St. Louis Park. So as we were bringing the students in, they were so excited to be standing there and saying, oh, well, we're talking in front of you. My kids go to St. Louis Park. So I think that just kind of added to the excitement. When we walked through the trading floor, again, people were approaching us and saying, you're from St. Louis Park, I know teachers, I know. So there was great, great connections. The kids felt good, the teachers did, and as we left, they said, you can come back every year. So I think that speaks highly of our students and our staff, and I appreciate the staff taking the time to bring the kids out, and our business professionals making these connections for us. And now we would like to welcome Gino Giovinelli from business perspective.
Perfect. Thank you. Hi, my name is Gino Giovinelli, and I'm a professor at the University of St. Thomas. I'm also the proud father of three boys in the St. Louis Park School District, and I'm going to talk to you a little bit about a field trip we did to the University of St. Thomas, which grew out of an idea that we came up with during one of our advisory meetings. We always have sort of breakout sessions where we spend time working with the teachers to say, hey, what do your students need? And one of the two teachers that we're working with said, you know, a lot of our students don't know how to, one, pick a major for college, and also to pick a college. So being a professor, I have got access to a ton of students who have gone through that experience, you know, a couple of years before. So I asked a couple of my students if they'd be willing to sit on a panel, and we brought 50 or so students from St. Louis Park down to St. Thomas on a snowy January, and we had basically a panel. And these students of mine were basically sharing how they pick a major. And not just the pretty picture, but they talked about the good, bad, the ugly, the honest truth, and how to pick a college, and how to narrow those choices down. We also opened up the floor to, I asked the students of mine, I said, hey, what do you know now that you wish you knew when you were their age? And they were able to share some great insights on how to, you know, pick roommates, how to acclimate to the social scene in college, social media in college. to acclimate to the social scene in college, social media in college, how to study effectively. So it was a great panel. It was an honest panel. It wasn't about St. Thomas, it was just about the college experience firsthand. And then we went on a little tour of St. Thomas, and it was a short tour because it was wicked cold, it was like below zero. And it ended at the student center so they could kind of soak in, what is it like to be on a campus at a student center with students buzzing around? And it finished with us having lunch where students in college eat and they were able to sit with college students and they're able to realize you can have ice cream at lunch if you want and all that kind of stuff. But basically, at the end of the day, it was very authentic. It was very, I think, enlightening. My students were super excited to do it. And I got, we got really good feedback from the St. Louis Park students. And the goal now is to turn it into a recurring event, which would be super easy to do. And it was just a big win for everybody. So thank you for your time.
Again, a large part of our success is being able to collaborate with teachers and students. So if Luke and Martha could come up?
Hi, I'm Martha Ortman, and I'm a teacher here at St. Louis Park High School. And this is Luke Siawski, an awesome student at St. Louis Park High School. One of the things that we had is, we had Steve Parsons and Kelly McCullough, who are right here. They came in and chatted with our classes, our graphics design classes, our media arts class, I don't know who to talk to, and digital artwork classes. And they gave a little bit of insight into advertising and marketing and some of the do's and don'ts, and how do you get from an idea to concept to completion kind of thing and what tools you can employ, and the idea of having a group of colors and fonts that work together instead of just throwing everything together because it might look cool, that there's actually some thought behind each planning. And one of the projects that my students do is to create posters for various things. And so one of the ideas was, oh, what can we, let's talk to other departments in our school and see, hey, what do you have that might be an interesting idea for an advertising poster? So there is the, somebody did one for synchronized swimming, a dress rehearsal, and then the other one is for, was for a band concert last year. And so it was the work that was done and the idea of, you know, choosing your color palette and fonts that make sense for what you're advertising. And it was really neat that the students could see the relevance between what they were doing in class and how it can impact the school. And so they felt really, really proud to walk through the halls and see their posters on the walls and go, I did that. So it was really nice to have that, showing how, yes, our subjects that we're learning in school actually can make a difference and have real-life impacts. And one of the other ideas that Steve and Kelly brought in was the idea of personal logos, instead of just a logo, to create a logo that meant something to the students, each student. And so there was kind of a little process that went, the students went through to get that. And Luke is going to explain how he got to his personal logo.
Yeah, so personal logo, it was a fun and interesting project. It started off with obviously you two coming in, giving us the spiel. You know, it was just another part of a school day. So it was fun and it was good to get that knowledge, actually. It was nice to have real people come in and be like, I do this every day or almost every day, and I know what I'm doing, and I'm going to try to teach you to know what you're doing. And so that kind of gave me that first perspective of like, I really kind of do know how to do this and I know what to do. And then it kind of came along with like a few worksheets that also told us like what different colors meant and like how we should use these colors to our advantage and to show different ideas. Even though, me personally, when I look at a logo, I never look at the color and I think about what that color means. But then once I saw this, I was like, oh, okay, that really does make sense to me how all of these colors tie in to mean different things. And the shapes, they all mean different things. Personally, on my logo, I did like a little dog on mine, and all the colors meant different things. So I had a dog in front of a nature background because dogs are loyal and I'm a loyal person. And the nature was, I just liked plants and I like nature and going out and doing stuff outside. So I thought that was, it all just fit me, you know? And all of the different colors I chose, I had like a sun in there and, you know, all kinds of other colors. But it all, it had a deeper meaning to me than I think it did to other people because I personally knew what every single color in that picture meant. And I looked at it and I was like, that's me. That's me in a picture right there. Not, obviously not the dog, but it was me. It was a description of me in the picture. So I think that that was fantastic. And I think that as a generalization, the whole course so far has just taught me so much, like even if I don't intend on using this knowledge for work in the future, if I do or not, I still like, I have it in case I ever need it, in case I ever want it, in case I choose to use it when I get into working. So I thought it was a fantastic experience and something that was great to learn.
My name is Jake Utitis. In case you're wondering, it's spelled J-A-K-E. Jokes aside, although I have been self-proclaimed, does amazing many, many times, I actually do need quite a bit of help. So I'm a second-year teacher, and I kind of got thrown into this academy advisory board thing right away, right off the start. And I wanted to talk just so really quick as to how it helped me as a teacher and then how it's helped my students. So behind the scenes, there's actually a lot of things that go on, from helping me build curriculum. So this year, I taught Java programming and it went absolutely, like way better than I thought it was going to go. And that was because of great people in this audience right here. Russ Frankel, Devin Sales, and somebody that Russ hooked me up with, his name is Will Buck. Devin helped me find resources to learn how to do Java programming, which I had no idea how to do before the summer. And Will Buck ended up actually tutoring me for that. So they've helped quite a bit with the actual curriculum of the, of my class, but then that's the behind-the-scenes stuff. The really cool stuff is what happens in front of everybody else. So I've had the opportunity to have multiple guest speakers. Devin, who I just said, came in this year and did an excellent IT exploration presentation. So my students got to see what actually jobs there are in this field, and there are a lot of them. Gino came in and did a marketing talk with my students as well, which was really cool, talking about brands. And then there's been other opportunities. I came to the advisory board this year and I said, listen, this is what I really, really want. I really want to take my IT kids on a field trip because I can't find anything, I'm swamped, and I just need a little bit of help. And boom, within a couple months or halfway, halfway through the year about, we were able to take them and they were psyched. They got to hang out and check out the Oculus Rift, which is a big technology that a lot of my students are very excited about. We got to check out Google Glass and then hear from some industry professionals, and then also take a tour of the college. So it was really cool. Lastly, we did have some extra help in my business innovations class, but that class is a little bit different than how you might envision most classroom settings. But I'm not very good at talking about it and I could just beauty it up a lot. So I figured I'd bring a student here. This is Joseph Benly. He's one of my vice presidents in the class. And he'll talk to you a little bit about how the class is run. And hopefully he'll have some nice things to say if he wants to get his money.
Yeah, so as Mr. Utitis pointed out, there is money involved. But that is because we, as a class and as different groups within the class, we create and run our own business as, hopefully, a cohesive unit. And there, yes, there is real money involved. We do, we buy and sell our products or we make our own. And this is all run through something we call a junior achievement company program or JA Company Program. And that has us, we, sorry, we vote for our presidents, our leaders, vice presidents, which, as he said, I am one of them. And then we open up a business. And it's a really good introduction to just business in general, but also rather than just lecturing us on, here's what could happen, here's this, we actually go ahead and do it. We run our own businesses. And we get very little outside influence from the teacher. It's really run specifically through us. And as, as far as I know, every person I've talked to, we all really enjoy the class. It's really fun. Obviously, money incentive is really not much there, but we do it because it's an amazing class. Mr. Utitis is a wonderful teacher. I mean, he's amazing. So myself, I do enjoy the class very much, which is why I wanted to come and talk to you guys about it because it's an amazing class, amazing teacher, amazing program in general. So thank you.
So what, oh, thank you very much, Joseph, for all those lies. No, I was just joking. No, it's wonderful. But what I wanted to have him talk about was the class itself, so we'll give you a quick introduction, just some things that happened. So I mentioned Gino came in and he talked about branding. So what we ended up doing with his talk is figuring out what was our brand going to be, what was our logo, how we were going to actually promote that, 30 seconds. And then lastly, we had another, oh, and we had another business professional come in named Tarabi, who brought us through every step of opening and starting a business, which was everything that I was doing. And it made the kids be like, oh, you're not full of steam, you're actually teaching something that happens in the real world. So it was kind of cool to have those people in. Thank you very much.
So thank you very much to everybody. And if the board has any questions?
I had a question for the student now that he's climbed all the way around. I was kind of curious what your product or products are.
Yeah, my company personally, we are selling headphones. We're called Soundbound. And we try to add our own twist to it. We don't just buy a product and sell it for slightly higher. We put our own little flavoring to it. We have our own logo, which we attach to all the headphones. We have our own marketing, like we don't, sorry. Yeah, we have our own logo, we have our own marketing, and we don't just buy and sell products at the same thing. We try to change it up.
And so how did you get to that initially? Did you, did you all kind of brainstorm and try to figure out what path to go?
Well, we have a lot of different, we have a lot of different meetings as a company as a whole, and then it's structured by department. I'm personally in charge of the Human Resources Department, so I was in charge of things like making the schedule and assisting any concerns that people had about it, you know, human resources. And we also had a marketing, production, finance, and several other departments as well that we all sectioned off. And yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions? No? Well, no, oh, one from the superintendent.
Not really a question, but I want to thank the group again. And I know some of them are Park alumni, at least I think they are. If you are an alumnus, would you just stand and wave so we can congratulate you two?
We have a couple of them. There's some of them there, aren't there, lady?
And then any parents of current Park students or former Park students, are there any parents out there? And then I think the post-secondary people, we should give you a special little thank you. If you're a post-secondary person, can you stand? And can you just say, do you mind just going to the microphone just for one second and just telling us your name again and where you work and what your job is there quickly? Because you've added so much to this group.
Good evening. I'm Farah Seth Khan, Director of Academic Initiatives at an entity called Advanced IT Minnesota. It's a center of excellence in IT and security education for the Minskew system. So I teach part-time at Metropolitan State University and occasionally at the Carlson School and Minneapolis Community and Technical College.
And I'm Rob Lowe. I forgot to say where I worked. It was at Normandale Community College. And I'm the Director of Transitions from High Schools to College. And I actually spent 15 years working at St. Paul Public Schools and now 15 years at Normandale. So this is something that's near and dear to my heart, and I think it's a great program. So I want to thank all of you for participating.
Good evening. My name is Russ Frankel, and I'm a colleague of Farah's at Advanced IT Minnesota, and I've been involved there for five years. And previously, I worked in the K-12 system for 30 years in community education. In fact, this was my second job in community education was here in 1979. So I've come back too. All right, thank you.
As I mentioned before, I'm a professor at University of St. Thomas. I teach digital marketing at the undergraduate and MBA level.
I just, I just wanted to recognize that expertise because at the very beginning, you noted the combination of practicing secondary teachers, post-secondary people out working in the real workplace, and students is a fantastic combination. So thanks, thanks to all of you.
Yes, from the board, thank you to all the community members who participate. That's what makes St. Louis Park great and how we keep this place going. Excuse me, thank you to the staff because a lot of our teachers and staff put in extra time to participate in the meetings or learn Java and everything else. And thank you to the students, to Luke and Joseph for coming tonight and telling us about your experience. So thank you to everybody, and we appreciate the presentation. We will move on now to the middle school report. And we have a team here, I think, from the middle school, but we'll start with Principal Les Borg.
Give me a moment to get set up, if you would.
While we're transitioning, I'll mention one thing I had for our communications and The Park perspective that went out, the city newsletter had filing dates for city council and school board, and the school board dates are wrong. So we just want to let people know that the correct school board, correct dates for filing for anybody who wants to be a candidate for the St. Louis Park School Board, the dates are July 28th through August 11th. So anybody who read the Park's perspective dates, you aren't too late, but you'll have to wait until the end of July, the 28th of July through August 11th are the dates between which anybody who wants to run for, as a candidate for school board can file. And that's here at the school district offices. So it looks like you connected it quickly, and I will turn it over to Les Borg.
Thank you. Good evening, St. Louis Park Community, School Board, District Staff. Again, my name is Les Borg, Principal of St. Louis Park Middle School. This evening, my colleagues and I will be presenting our 2014 results and school improvement plan that we've been working on during the 2014-15 school year. Before beginning the presentation, I would first like to recognize that many of our department chairs are here tonight who support and lead the work that we're doing as well on a daily basis. Thank you for your efforts. Thank you for continued work, and thank you for your support. I'm honored to be able to work with you. On this slide, I have outlined the significant initiatives that were developed in the World's Best Workforce Plan that has driven some of the major work we have done at the middle school this year. Specifically, under the professional learning category, our staff participated in the PD Academy offered last summer and will again participate this summer as well. Significant time and energy went into the implementation of the teacher and principal evaluation plan that is upping our professional learning and our accountability around developing success strategies for student learning. The middle school has also been very hard at working to understand and developing the skills in the digital platform category as it applies to Schoology and our new website presence. The engagement of our teaching staff in weekly The engagement of our teaching staff in weekly content PLC meetings, weekly Wednesday Academy PLCs, monthly building faculty meetings, and quarterly early release and late start PD days have afforded the time for us to work on what I've outlined above. We have also highlighted on this slide the intensive work done in the area of middle years program, international baccalaureate program, as another major initiative that has significantly changed the way our students learn, which we'll talk about in greater depth later in this presentation. To give you some background, the number of students in each demographic category has remained fairly constant as the number of students has gradually increased in the school over the past three years. I believe our school has continued to grow significantly from two thousand and ten, when the sixth grade first came over. One, due to the fact that we are now on board with most of the rest of the metro area with sixth grade being that transition point we talked about almost five years ago. And the other, I think, is the support that people are voting with their feet by coming to the St. Louis Park Middle School because they're liking the program that we've developed. Percentages in the Gifted and Talented Program and Open Enrolled Students serviced by the school has increased over this time period, while students in other categories have remained relatively constant. Of significance in this slide is that fifty percent of our students in our Special Education Program are white. And over the past three years, we've had two different GT teachers trying to, for different identification procedures to identify more students of color. Currently, ninety percent of our students in our GT program are white as well. Approximately ninety-four percent of the students in our English Language Program are students of color. I'd like to now introduce Mia Waldera, who has worked so diligently on the development with the rest of our staff in our NYPD IB program as our coordinator, who will be sharing some further information.
Good evening. So as we take a look at this slide, we want to consider again that for the two thousand fourteen-fifteen school year, the district and the schools' World's Best Workforce Plan identified that our building goal should be set to increase the percentage of black students in the proficiency category by five percent, while increasing our achievement in the all-student category by two percent. That's always our goal this year. This slide looks at some historic data on reading proficiency on the MCAs. So as we take a look at this, the reading test from two thousand eleven to two thousand fourteen, you'll notice that there's a break in the chart. So the test was significantly changed for the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year by the Minnesota Department of Education to better align the assessment with the new state standards in language arts. So it's difficult, if we, if not impossible, for us to compare the two sets of data. So we'll focus on thirteen-fourteen, uh, information in front of us. So in the school years ending thirteen and fourteen, you can see that the achievement of our white and our black student categories remained relatively constant, while achievement shown by our Asian Pacific Islander students dropped by fourteen percent. And then differently, Hispanic group of students increased eight percentage points. Now we'll shift to our math proficiency at the middle school. And reiterating our building goal again, for the fourteen-fifteen school year, our goal was to set the increase, the percentage of black students in the meets and exceeds category by five percent, while increasing our achievement in the all-student category by two percent. So as you take a look at the data in mathematics, it's quite interesting data in the sense that both our black and our white student groups increased, while no group decreased in performance during our thirteen-fourteen school year. And of particular note, as you look at the lines moving from left to right, you'll see that all students have been experiencing a gradual increase in achievement from the years two thousand eleven to two thousand fourteen. This slide looks at our sixth grade predicted MCA results in reading and math. And all of our sixth grade students were given the MAP NWA test this past fall. And based on the data from these tests, we would expect to see a significant difference in achievement levels between our black and white students, and lower achievement levels overall in math when compared to the same students taking the reading test this spring, unless our interventions or our design programming are able to intervene. The Explore Test was given to our eighth grade students for the first time this fall as a result of new state legislation on college and career readiness. The Explore Test helps students to plan for high school, as well as help students with career and college exploration and development. So as you can see, there is a large gap evident in our four content areas between our students of color and our white students. Since this is our first year giving the Explore Test, we're working with district office staff on how particularly this assessment should help drive the instruction and the programming at our middle school. Now at this time, I'd like to introduce Jason Bowe, the Assistant Principal at the St. Louis Park Middle School. And Jason's going to look at the different pathways that we're taking at our middle school in order to achieve the goals we've set.
Thank you, Mia. Good evening, School Board. So I first want to go back to our district data retreat this summer. And at that time, our main focus became raising the student achievement levels of our black students in math and reading. Um, our building goals were set in, in August around this and all the meetings that our teachers participate in. So our every-other-day professional learning community meetings, our weekly academy professional learning community meetings, and our monthly faculty meeting. This was always the outcome that we wanted all of our work to result in. In October, we had a building-wide equity walk that all of our district-level administrators and leaders participated in, as well as all of our principal member, all of our principal group members. And we had eighteen teachers this year that signed up for having an equity coach. And either Sarah Riker or Eric America worked with them. And I, and I constantly heard about how, how transformative that work was, working with them this year. The last week of March this year, Mia pushed the button on this massive file that submitted our international baccalaureate application. And we're going to have our visit, uh, this fall. What I really want to highlight is the last three years, though. The work that's gone into this the last three years and the support that many people have given, um, starting with the school board, all of our district-level administrators and leaders across the room. Thank you. Uh, the leadership that Mia Waldera and Les Borg have led in this area, but especially the work that our teachers have done, um, over this three-year plan. We have an online program called Manage Back. And if you would go through and look at the level of work that have gone into our IB unit planners and, um, how detailed, how inquiry-based, how thought-provoking all of our lessons are, you would be quite impressed. We had nine days last summer that we offered kind of an IB Summer Academy. Over those nine days, every one of our teaching departments were represented over the summer work of those nine days. The other thing I want to talk about is the community project. So NYPD was designed as a grade level six through ten program. And they always in tenth grade had this personal project that all the students had to complete in tenth grade. And the new requirement is that if you're a six-eight program, which, which obviously we are, um, there's now a community project that all students must, um, take on. So this year, we had Randy Moore and Ellen Steib and Ann Singer, one of our paraprofessionals, help pilot this community project work. And we had about sixty students that did it. Next year, every single one of our eighth graders has to do this community project. And they can work by themselves or in a group of two or three. And they have to take on either a global topic, a local topic, could take on bullying, um, hunger, poverty. And they get to choose kind of something that they're passionate in. And they're going to be raising awareness, um, or doing some, some sort of advocacy work around the topic that they choose. And we got to see, um, a presentation on May twenty-first of all the groups that did this work. Um, and we're excited that all of our eighth graders and all of our students, as they go through, um, will be doing this community project. Another thing I want to talk about is what we did with our psych council this year. We were really trying to partner with our parents. And there were small groups that our parents broke into with our teachers. The biggest thing I think that came out, um, we've always had field trips at our school, but we've never really had a cohesive, um, plan with regard to field trips. So starting next year, our plan is that every student in every grade level will get an academic field trip experience and a leadership type of experience. And our hope is that we're going to be doing that, um, you know, starting next year and all the way forward. And lastly, I want to talk about, um, our math and language arts work specifically. We're continuing trying to align to standards, benchmarks. Uh, we had a CMP trainer, all of our staff. Um, we've used CMP for over ten years, and that's our Connected Mathematics Program, our, our math curriculum that we use at the middle school. But we had everybody trained over two days. We're bringing that same trainer back again this summer because her work was so good. We had a math coach meet twice a month with all of our math teachers individually and give them feedback on classroom instruction. And we've taken advantage of our local expert, uh, Director of Teaching and Learning, Carrie Ross, who's working with our language and literature, language and literature teachers. And I'm now going to introduce Gina Magnuson, who will continue talking about some of the work at our building. Uh, Gina's currently a dean of students, and she's been our RTI coordinator the last four years and is truly a leader in our building on professional development.
Good evening. As Jason had said, I'm going to continue talking about some pathways to meet our goals. And one of those is in response to instruction, or you might hear it as RTI. Our number one focus is at Tier One. And Jason also talked about our every-other-day PLCs. Our PLCs, we have six of eight departments have time in the school day to meet. And in that time, they review data. They use common assessments and common planning, and then also reflection. We also, in our Tier One, we have a Thursday RTI block. What that means is that we have modified our schedule on Thursdays to allow a fifty-minute time slot for our math and reading teachers in grades six through eight and our science teachers in grades seven and eight to pull kids from formative assessments who need more time on task and instruction. These students are pulled out of an enrichment class, which means that they are not taken out of any other required curriculum throughout the day. We have eight hundred and ten students up there. Out of nine hundred and ninety student population currently, eight hundred and ten of them have accessed this time with their teachers to get more instruction on task. In Tier Two, which is in addition to Tier One and more support, we have student success coaches, which I will talk more in depth in a second. But we also have accelerated math and reading. This is the first year that we've implemented a second scoop for students who needed, who need more math and reading support, who are testing below grade level. As I said, I will talk about school success coaches more in depth. Some practices that we are implementing to close the gap, you can see multiple on here. One of them is school success coaches. First time implemented this year, we have taken ten of our teachers during a supervision and given them students chosen by our deans. They meet with those students once a week to go over academics, discipline, behaviors. They set goals, make a plan, and then come back and review the next week. Of, up to date, eighty students have accessed this. And how we get that information is the deans meet on a weekly basis, pulling data on academics, discipline, attendance, and tardies. Another practice that we use to close the gap is that every staff member was asked to choose two black students in their classes. They were supposed to keep those two students in mind when, in, in doing instructional design, lesson planning, and activities, to be more intentional about reaching them and closing the gap. At this time, I'm going to turn it back over to Les, who's going to continue to highlight some of our things that are happening in our building. Thank you.
The highlight this year has definitely been the implementation of a five-year journey towards year-one implementation of the coordinated middle school. As you know, in the spring of two thousand and ten, take us down history lane here, a decision was made to close an elementary school and move all the sixth graders to the middle school, renaming it from St. Louis Park Junior High to St. Louis Park Middle School. That year, we increased our student body by fifty percent, while decreasing support staff due to the need to reduce funding. The first year, even while reducing dollars spent at the middle school, parents and staff worked together with consultants in the development of a bold new vision. It was titled, "The Coordinated Middle School Program." Through coordinated effort between our community, district office staff, building leadership, superintendent's office, today we stand before you and say we've developed and implemented a program where everyone gets more. More in the area of academics, more in general programming for students, more opportunity for students to accelerate their learning in math and reading. No middle school in the metro area does more. For example, students can not only take one, but two different world language classes and immersion if they're so qualified. Students may enroll in multiple music choices, multiple art choices. They can sign up for courses like digital storytelling, photography, microbiology, mini golf madness. The students are in control of some of their learning, which I believe makes for a more engaged and involved student body. If students are not on grade level in math and reading, as Gina talked about, they get a second scoop in that subject area so we can accelerate their learning to better assure that they're ready for the rigors of high school. The following slides, I have four of them, put into pictures of what I'm talking about. And I'm really speaking to a children's first, uh, one of the children's first components, which is student engagement. And I challenge anyone, the, these are mini golf award winners. These students won two thousand dollars in the development and submission of golf holes for a mini golf course being developed in St. Paul through a math class, elective math class they signed up for. As you can imagine, you can see in their faces, they're pretty happy. To the chagrin of one of the students, at least one of the parents is putting some of that money away for a college fund. A coffeehouse performance venue started this year to give students an authentic opportunity to showcase their talent under the IB learner profile umbrella of being principled, risk-takers, and knowledgeable in the area of their expertise. You'll also notice that Superman there is one of our teachers as well. Students are being identified, as both Gina and I talked about, and placed in math and reading classes to accelerate their learning with the goal of grade-level achievement by the time they leave eighth grade. Lastly, we've been doing this for many, many years. I don't know, eight, ten? We've been surveying the students, and we have longitudinal data. We surveyed the students in the fall and the spring of the year with a ten-question survey. I'd like to highlight the question here. The adults at my school expect me to do well academically. Last year, two thousand and fourteen, spring of two thousand and fourteen, it was high at ninety-two point three percent. And this year, we're sitting at ninety-five. I'm, I'm hopeful we can go higher. I just don't know how much higher we can go. The above are some of the examples of our first year of implementation of our newly-coordinated St. Louis Park Middle School. School Board, thank you for your support.
Board members, thank you for the presentation. And board members, do you have questions for, uh, the team? And Ken?
Okay. I have, thank you very much for this presentation. It was very enlightening. I have a few questions, um, around the RTI. So, um, the RTI is given the Tier Two, I think it's Stage Two. And that, that's geared for the individuals that are not making, um, the grade levels or passing the MCAs?
Well, there's multiple data points that go into that. So Tier Two is, we have Tier One, which is a hundred percent access to all students. And Tier Two then is anything needing in addition. So those students are, um, looking at MCA, looking at NWA, as well as classroom performance in, um, the areas of...
in the areas of math and reading is what we're highlighting in right now. Does that answer your question?
That does. And how is that, how's the results of that? Are you finding that the additional delivery of content, is it helping them to get better at concluding that they're going to pass this test? Or is it, I don't know, just in your opinion?
So, this is the first year of implementation with the second scoop. We've, that's gone full body, that everybody's been identified. We have done some reading support prior with a very small amount of population. We're here now, it's everybody's identified to get that second scoop. So I'm not sure where our data is at the moment. I do not have that data with me, that test score. Go ahead.
So I think this might address it. I was talking with Robin Poitras, one of our acceleration reading teachers, just today. And currently in our intervention class, our acceleration class, we're using focused reading intervention. It's the name of the curriculum. She was very excited to report to me that the P, meaning partially proficient on an MCA in reading, last year she had three students in her acceleration class receive a P from a D to a P, and this year she had 15. And in the meets category, she had zero last year, and now she has six. So, very preliminarily, I mean, we're just looking at results coming in, but she was very excited to see that, yes, things were moving forward. And according to the monitoring that she gives on a very regular basis, students were growing in their reading.
With those numbers, it sounds like you will exceed your projected 5%. Because 5% was roughly 10 students need to pass the MCAs of the block kids. So it sounds like that's really obtainable then, right?
Well, we're hoping so. Those scores aren't finalized, so, yes.
Understand, but in theory, you could. Okay.
Any other questions? Nancy?
Yeah, this has been such a work in progress for the last few years, and you've really all worked so hard to adapt to, I think lots of change, both in students and in curriculum and between IB and between moving from, as the parents would say, all students moving on the bell, as contrasted with the original transition of the sixth graders where they were sort of contained in their classroom. And I understand in doing that, the immersion students still have three classes in immersion in sixth grade and two, and seventh and eighth. My question, I've got a couple, is just how has that gone? That transition to having all sixth, seventh, and eighth graders moving, so to speak, on the bell?
Thanks, Nancy. I think we're all very happy with how everything has gone. Overall, this year has been tremendous. There's been drops in discipline that we've seen, and we haven't really know what to attribute it on, but having all teachers and everyone on the same schedule has been very helpful. It's been wonderful in my world.
And then I had one quick question, and maybe a longer one. The quick question is, what was the community project the students did this year?
Do you want to talk? Me can probably give the best answer here.
What were some of the projects? Well, one young gentleman, he was teamed up with another student, his family's represented here this evening, did a fabulous community project about creating little blankets, not little, but you know, the right-sized blanket for humane societies for cats and cat rescue programs. And animal abuse and animal rescue was very near and dear to his heart. He and his partner, they were working on this. So they had the materials, they've been creating these, they've been doing outreach to the Animal Humane Society. So that was one in particular. But we could go on and on about the different actions. There were several about cancer and raising awareness and advocacy around cancer and cancer awareness. Some, what I found most profound is that these were really about student stories, things that were engaging to them and meaningful to them in some way because of the patterns of their lives. And they wanted to take action. And so it was, they spoke very eloquently when it really came from their heart.
Oh, go ahead.
So, I went to those presentations on May 21st, and I was so impressed with the work that the kids had done. And they, and I had used it as an asset because a lot of them had to do additional outside homework in their team to be ready for these presentations. And really, the topics were timely, animal rights, education in Somalia, child slave labor, gender equity issues. I mean, just a huge gamut of topics. And really, the support that they had from their advisors, the fact that they had to do public presentation and take questions, they were very well-prepared for that. I thought they did a great job. And I cannot wait to see the whole eighth grade take this on next year. It's going to be phenomenal. So thank you so much.
They were well-prepared from their fifth grade IB presentations like that.
Yeah.
I like hearing the way you talked about the pilot program this year will be for every student, not for some chosen students, but for every student. And that's the power of the International Baccalaureate Program that's changing the way we're doing business. Without that behind us, giving us exposure and expertise, I don't believe our entire eighth grade would be doing that next year. That's just a small part of really how IB has affected our school. Thank you for opening your checkbooks and allowing us the resources to bring this into play.
Nancy, you had another question?
I did, I did. This is the first time that I've heard about the Explore Test in grade eight. I don't really know, and I'm not, you don't have to go on and on, but some sense of what kind of a test that is and what these numbers mean in terms of how they correlate to any other data that we have, or is this just sort of a standalone thing?
Well, Nancy, I'm not going to shoot from the hip on this in the respect that this is our first year. The state has mandated that we do this. Many, many years ago, I actually had students take the Explore Test, which is the precursor to the PLAN and the ACT tests that students are taking now in high school. And really, for me to talk about the significance of it at this point in time, being the first year, I'm going to defer really doing that. You can see some of the results we, in the respect, we'd like our kids to be more college and career-ready, but we can't really speak to some of the significant pieces you're talking about because we haven't delved into it any farther than that. I do have Prachi over here who has helped me with that. If she has anything else she'd like to add and go on mic, that would be great. You know it far better than I.
And if now's the time, fine, if we need to come back to it in another meeting, that's okay too. We don't have the data here on how it compares to state results either, or if it's just too soon, I don't know.
About Explore PLAN and ACT together along with the state results.
And since that wasn't on the mic, Prachi suggested we talk about Explore PLAN and ACT together because it is part of the ACT suite of assessments that is supposed to provide a college and career readiness assessment appropriate to the grade level. So, that makes sense to have it as a topic for discussion once we have results for all of those tests. Bruce?
I also want to congratulate you on, it was mentioned, but I don't think the emphasis was put on the submission of the certification for IB, the submission of that tome. I congratulate you on it, the board congratulates you on it, because once we are an IB-certified middle school, it's great to go through the process, but at the same time, to be certified and the progress you make even after that is really amazing. So I'm just very proud of what you've done. I'm proud of the middle school and the progress you've made, and I just think our whole district just looks at what you've done. But the submission of that document is truly amazing. I don't know that anybody, except those of you who put it together, can understand how much work it was. So, thank you for all you've done.
Well, thank you for giving me a forum. You know, we're at a point, we're at such a tenuous point here in the respect that we don't want to finish short. We want to be authorized, as you spoke to. So we're not talking about it as much as we should, I think. Our staff have really come together to, it is an unbelievable document, but more importantly, it's an unbelievable change in practice of where we're going as a teaching staff and as a learning entity. And so, come to site visit this fall, you'll all be invited to come over. We'll be having a team coming in to see exactly the work that we're saying we're doing, and we're intending to be authorized at that time.
Well, we all are very optimistic. Ken's got another question, though.
Okay, I hope this is the last question, but this refers back over to the working to close the achievement gap again. And there was a statement about there's two black kids chosen from every class to kind of focus and make sure that they're learning and progressing on. How is that chosen? How do they choose those kids? And is there a risk of all teachers picking the same or similar kids? Or are we picking out of the 147 kids, are we picking a good chunk of them to learn something more?
Well, I'm going to start and talk the philosophy around it. Jason may come in and talk about the statistical information of how we chose to. And first of all, we chose to as part of our equity journey, our equity walk as an organization. And we know that if we choose as an organization that is primarily white to focus on students who are black students, who are in primary need of our support, when we develop, I'm getting a little tongue-tied here, Ken, who really look for us in the development of our curriculum. So, I'm going to back up here. Last fall, we determined as a staff that this is our biggest achievement gap. And what we intended to do in the development of our lessons, in the development of our relationships, in our outreach to our parents, we did not want to ignore these students. And we have chosen not to do so. And we wanted to keep it as simple as we could because we know keeping it simple had the greatest chance to implementation. There are a lot of good plans out there. If they're not implemented, they're really not worth much. So trying to keep it simple, we didn't put a lot of infrastructure requirements into it. We just said to our teachers, pick two black students, pick two in every class, and make sure that those students feel invited, and that when you develop lessons from time to time, you think about those two students and what those students need. Because we know that if we raise our students' performance, our kids of color, all students' performance will rise. That's why you see in our billing goal, we're looking to raise our students of color, our black students, by five percentage points while raising all students by 2%. So it's rising tides raise all boats. Jason, you want to talk about how that statistical number was arrived to make our goal?
Yep. So, when we were at the data retreat, we really wanted to say, well, what, you know, 5% increase, but what does that really mean? How many students are we really talking about? So we broke it down in how many teachers, and we have sections, you know, assigned to us that the district assigns in terms of staffing. If every teacher chose two students per class or had about 10 students, even if they were the same exact students, you know, at every grade level, that would still mean that we would be making our goal. So that's kind of the reason we came up to kind of follow the SMART goal acronym, specific, measurable, attainable, you know, results-oriented, and time-bound. We really felt that this really simplified it as best we could and put some context around how can we achieve this goal in math and reading.
Sounds good. So, after this year, you would have learned, you had a year of learning. Are you intending on changing that effort? Only, I only say that because, as you were saying, Les, it's an environment where you could just pick 10 really cool kids that need help, all right? And then those 10 kids would get help. I'm concerned about the kids that aren't so cool, that aren't really jiving with all the teachers. You understand what I mean? So is there a way that you're going to look at the data for the future and see if you need to put structure around that so that you're reaching more than 40 kids, whatever that number is, but a greater population?
So, one of the things we didn't talk about, Ken, is the fact that our students that were chosen are Ds and Ps, are students who are not meeting, for the most part, our MCA goals. So we're choosing students that aren't at the meet or exceed level. And all of our teachers have data, we call them data drawers, where in each of their classes, they have identified students in multiple measures who are and aren't achieving in the classes in our standardized assessments. So they're very easily seen, easy for our teachers at the end of the day or the end of the class period to go and say, who's meeting, who's exceeding, who's not, and what can I do to help all of them, whatever color the student is. In regard to what's next, we have a summer PD activity that's going on as we look at data. We also have a data retreat that we'll be going through in August, I know you know about because you've been to them. So for me to say what we're going to do at this time would be a little disingenuous because we need to look at the data, look what we're doing, see how successful we are. Just about a month ago, I asked the staff, write down the names of the students and turn it in, and we have that information, and we're going to see how well we did.
Perfect. Thank you.
Before you run, Les, though, you have a...
I'm not running anywhere.
Before you move away, there's a large number of staff here from the middle school, and you've introduced the presenters, but would you introduce the staff who have come and spent part of their evening here with us, please?
Lil Zumberg.
And their department as well.
Language and Literature. Molly Rosen, sixth-grade teacher. Derek Winterberg, he has so many hats, I can't say what they are. IF, FIAD, ATPPS, et cetera. Kevin Homstad, sixth-grade teacher. Maria Argo, sixth-grade teacher, immersion. Barry McCain is over there, our tech ed teacher and design teacher as well. Ellen Steib is our Language and Literature Department Chair. All of these are our department chairs. Delana Brinkman, Dean of Students. Randy Zutz, Department Chair in Math and also a Dean of Student as well. We have our whole front office team here this evening.
Thank you, because everything you've done and going to do takes them as well.
Thank you.
So, thank you for that presentation. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight and for everything you do every day at the middle school. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Our next topic is less joyful. It is the 2015-16 probationary nonrenewals, and our Director of Human Resources, Rick Cryer, will explain that to us.
Thank you, members, chair members of the board, superintendent. Yes, and this is, you know, an unpleasant, you know, transaction that we're bringing before you, but this is a combination of, you know, at the end of each school year, the supervisors are asked to make a decision about renewing contracts for probationary teachers. In the district, there were just a little under 100 probationary teachers in either year one, two, or three, and these represent kind of a combination of performance-related items and actions where the school may be changing from a focus, let's say, in biology courses and maybe adding chemistry or, you know, so the teacher is being non-renewed because there isn't a specific space for them for the following year, so.
Okay, board members, this is on our action agenda later on. Are there any questions that you have for Director Cryer? Okay, we'll move on to the next one, which is similar, the 2015 unrequested leave of absence. And Director Cryer, can you tell us about that?
Again, this is part of the overall staffing for the school district. There is a teacher who has a very specific assignment. That assignment is being reduced by 2/10 of an FTE. And according to the tenure statute, if the person is tenured at .9 in this case, and you're removing, and you're downgrading that position from .9 to .7, you must place them on an unrequested leave of absence for that portion for which they're tenured. So in this case, it would be a partial reduction of 2/10 of an FTE.
Any questions from the board members about that topic? All right, that's also on our action agenda later this evening. Our next, thank you. Our next item is the 2015 Health and Safety Annual Budget and Report Approval. This is the discussion portion, and Sandy Saline, our Director of Business Services, will present this topic. And Sandy Celine, our, our director of business services, will present this topic.
A little bit difficult to see, but this is something that we have to do every year. Um, we have to, um, have the board approve our health and safety budgets, which is a requirement by the Minnesota Department of Education. And, um, I'm gonna go through this real briefly. We did give the, uh, board the details behind, um, the budgets, both for, um, all for fifteen, sixteen, as well as two thousand seventeen fiscal year. And basically, this, um, will be brought in our levy process also and be approved through the levy process. Um, and basically, our levy process, um, um, levies what we actually spend on the health and safety. Um, many of these items are, um, what's required of us through other agencies, um, through the federal and state, um, as well as local. Um, that requires us to do certain things through the health and safety. Um, we do have, um, management, um, that, um, we are currently, um, trying to do more so in out, in-house versus having a, um, consultant that used to do it. Um, since we have hired a facilities manager, we are able to, um, um, do some of this in-house. So there is a slight increase for two thousand fifteen to create some of that training requirements that are needed to update, um, that process so that that person can do more of that management. Um, so other than that, you will see that pretty much from year to year, you're gonna see comparable bottom line, with the exception, like I said, of that management increasing slightly for two thousand fifteen, the current year, to obtain that training. But otherwise, it's pretty stable, um, basically meeting the requirements that are needed, um, as well as those, um, management fees to, um, run the program. So with that, unless there's any questions, that's all I have.
Are there any questions? Okay, that's on our approval, uh, or our action agenda later this evening. Um, the next item is, um, the policy development. It's the first reading of a new policy, uh, four twenty-seven workload limits for certain special education teachers. And, uh, this is a new requirement. Our director of special education, Tammy Reynolds, will explain that to us.
Good evening, you're right, this is a new requirement. And we are proposing that we adopt the recommended policy through MSBA. We have, um, protocols and procedures internally that align very, very nicely with this. And I have a formula that we use for our special education staffing that takes account for direct service, indirect service, case management time, and evaluation time based on the federal setting that the students are in. So how much special education time they receive each day.
Okay, are there questions from the board? Nancy?
Hey Tammy, this is, this is four twenty-seven, right?
Correct.
So I'm just, um, in terms of the purpose of the policy, I don't know if you have it in front of you, Tammy. Um, it is not, and I know this comes from the NSBA, so this is their drafting. It's an English question. I don't, I'm not sure whether the tail end of that sixty percent or less of instructional day refers to the children or the staff. Which, which part of that sentence is being modified by that phrase?
The sixty percent of the day refers to a federal setting that the students are in. So that equates to how much of the time are they in special education during the day?
The students.
Correct.
Yeah, that isn't clear, that's good. The answer was clear, though. Other questions? I would just note this note, these note provisions in brackets at the middle, again, it's a good explanation for us to have, but I assume those would not be part of the final policy. And you're nodding, so, Cindy's nodding, so that is great. Okay, that will come back to us, or if there are no further questions, that will come back to us for a second reading and, um, adoption, if we so vote at our next meeting. Or actually, it's going to be at our second June meeting. No, wait a minute, let me get this right yet. I'm looking at the wrong one, June eighth, at our next meeting. So we'll go to the next, uh, policy development, which is a second reading. So it is on our action agenda tonight. And that is, um, the new policy, seven ninety-nine post issuance debt compliance. This is my favorite policy title of all of the exciting pi, policy titles we have, seven ninety-nine. So, um, Sandy Celine, we talked about it before. Uh, there is a couple of changes in here. Do you wanna explain, um, explain any changes or Cindy?
I believe Cindy made the changes.
Okay, these are just adding, noting who, that it's with approval, the superintendent of, of schools.
Right, Julie, when, when we discussed is at the last meeting, that was-
When I wasn't there, so on, ignorant, Joe.
That was a suggestion that we made to add that so that we had, have that double check for any buddy approving funds. And then, while we don't have the procedures with us for this one, Cindy was gonna go make sure that the procedures are updated to reflect that same change.
So Nancy and all board members, these changes are consistent with what you discussed at our last meeting? Okay. All right, anything else that people wanna ask about or, um, talk about debt compliance tonight or this policy? Bruce?
I can see why it's your favorite policy, though.
Policy title, uh, post issuance debt compliance. All right, with that, we'll move on to our next topic, which is the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school calendar discussion. Back to our director of human resources, Rick Cryer.
This has, uh, been one of the most discussed calendars that you probably had. So, um, uh, we're bringing, we're bringing the calendar, uh, back for the board. Um, you've seen this a number of times, starting all the way in January. Um, we've modified it slightly. There's actually a new copy that's, um, at your places. Um, the copy that was in the original board packet. Um, one change, as we, as we modified, uh, we caught, uh, the change for the last day for students everywhere except, uh, where it's noted, end of student quarter reports. Uh, it's on, uh, on the, on the board book, it said six-two, six-one. It should say six-two, and it, and the one that you're approving tonight at your places does say six-two. And it says six-two everywhere. So students would come all the way until June second. Um, there was one thing that the, um, the teachers' union wanted us to make sure that we said out loud, uh, for all the people that are watching. And that is, um, we're approving this tentatively right now because we're, we're, we wanna have two years of, of calendars approved. We will be bringing this calendar back in January, just to reaffirm that this is the calendar. Uh, if no new input came, if no discussions came, we would re, in essence, reapprove the sixteen, seventeen calendar in January and then set out the seventeen, eighteen calendar at, you know, in January as well. So, um, this will not be the last time the board will ever, you know, um, have to look at the, uh, sixteen, seventeen calendar.
Well, since this has been talked about, as you say, can you remind us of the consultation process and who's all been involved?
Uh, yes, uh, the, the, the superintendent, the communications director, myself, um, have met with, uh, um, a number of stakeholder groups, including most all of the union groups. We've sent this calendar to all the employee groups. Um, we've met with DPAC. Um, it's been, uh, put out in the website as a proposed calendar. So it's been communicated fairly broadly. Um, I can't remember, I believe that there were other publications to parents, uh, in, in looking for feedback. So we've, we've done probably more than we have in other contracts because, or, uh, calendars. Because of the change to a start before Labor Day, we wanted to make sure we had as much input as people wanted to give us about, um, that change.
Okay, board members, questions? Nancy?
Yeah, Rick, I'm just a little, um, puzzled and maybe I'm just not remembering about. I mean, typically, when we adopt the calendar here, we're intending that it will be our calendar absent something that requires us to change it, that we, you know, maybe there's a change in the law. And because people rely on this and start booking vacations. And, and so if we're gonna vote on it today, I, I, I was a little puzzled by that qualifier that you were adding there at the teacher's request. I, I, can you, I don't get it.
Um, that again, I think that that's a fair, your statement is a fair statement that absent some major new item, this would be our calendar for that year. Uh, but, you know, the, the teachers' group said, but that means that there would be another look. And we said, well, yes, of course, if something new came up, if some major change happened, if something that we had not foreseen, um, uh, happened between now and January when we approved the next calendars, yes, of course, the board would take that new information into, you know, into play. But again, I think it would be, this is our intended calendar.
And because, uh, as a board member, I've only heard from one teacher who expressed some concern. Has anybody, so I don't think, I mean, there's been a lot of publicity. Now would have been the time for feedback, and I hope the teachers understand that. Cause I don't wanna mislead them. I just wanna be clear about, when I vote on this as a board member, my perspective.
Any other questions or comments from the board? And we should note, I don't, just to not, I don't recall if I said it, this is the two thousand sixteen, seventeen calendar. We have already approved a while ago the calendar for next, for the, the next year, the one that starts in a few months from now. Um, so this is for a year from now.
Probably also good to stress that this fall's calendar starts after Labor Day.
Good point, so.
Whereas this one does not.
Two thousand fifteen, we are starting after Labor Day. We're, this calendar, if we approve it, would be one year and three months from now, starting, uh, one week before Labor Day. But then ending on a Friday, which is often something I hear from both families and staff, being important not to carry forward to a Monday or a Tuesday, trying to end at the end of a week. Um, and this calendar for two thousand seventeen, uh, does that. Ends on June second, two thousand seventeen. Okay, if there's no more questions, then we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is... Actually, I am, my reading did... I turned the page too quickly and was on to the action agenda. Um, but we're not there yet. The next item is the bid opening report, school, uh, the school district bid opening report. And that's our director of business services, uh, Sandy Celine.
Yes, now that we're winding down on our construction, um, for additions, we're starting some deferred maintenance, um, construction. And, um, there was three bids that, three projects that we had bid. Um, one, the first one was for Blacktop, um, pavement rehabilitation. Um, and we did take the lowest bidder, um, who was LA Blacktop for a hundred and ninety-five thousand eight hundred and forty-six, um, which we are gonna be asking the board to approve. Um, through these processes, we have had the help of Inspec, um, to, to monitor this as well as provide any input, um, on the bidders. And that bidder was identified as a legitimate bidder that, um, um, is, is recommended as able to do the job. Um, the next one was for Aquila Tuck Pointing Project, um, which, um, the lower bidder ended up being TNT Tuck Pointing for two hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred. And again, um, this, um, this, um, contractor was recommended by Inspec as a legitimate contractor who was able to do that work. Um, we did have a change, um, at the Central Community Center Tuck Pointing. Um, we had originally awarded, um, a bid, which, um, we got a low bidder, um, who decided to withdraw and sent us a withdrawal letter. Um, so therefore, we are going to be awarding to the next lower bidder of Building Restoration Corporation for four hundred and to, forty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-six, um, who is also, um, viewed by Inspec as a legitimate, um, contractor who can do this work. So with that, um, we would be asking the board for approval, for the approval.
Any questions from the board? Ken?
Um, on these bids, do we get a, um, a warranty or guarantee that they will come in on time? Or there's penalties? Or do we not do those type of things on these smaller contracts?
Um, normally, they up the cost when we, um, ask for any guarantees of that sort. I mean, we, we do, um, give a end date as far as when our expectation is. But I think as, um, Wold had said before, with the problems that we were having with this, you know, it would probably take money on our part to actually go through any legal process if they were to go beyond that date. But we do put an end date of expectation date of that happening.
That's not our normal practice to have them, when we put it out to bid, that if you go past the due date, then you're penalized? That's not part of our normal contracts?
Um, normally, if you put that kind of language in, we, we have not normally done that. I mean, we've, we've put an end date, um, with the understanding that, you know, we could probably put some claims against them if we had to. But we normally don't do that for the understanding that they will probably increase their, their costs with, if we put any other language in there.
Other question? Joe?
Could you explain what, uh, Inspec is?
Yes, I'm sorry. Inspec is a consultant that we use who has, um, knowledge of the tuck pointing and, um, pavement projects. And we've used them for many years to be able to provide consulting services for us to ensure that, um, the pe, the contractors that we use, as well as our bidding process, is within, um, the standards, um, of the industry.
Thank you.
Nancy?
And Sandy, it's required by a policy that we have to take the lowest bid. That's why we wanna use the services of Inspec to make sure that the bidding process is, is vetted as much as possible, correct?
Um, we are required to use the lowest bidder as long as they are the most responsible bidder. And as long as, you know, we don't know anything of them coming in, that they're not going to be the responsible bidder. So that's why we always have our consultants, um, work with us too, because they know the industry and, um, know these contractors. And, and we do the best that we can, along with the consultant, in identifying any issues that may be, oh, that they may be aware of as well as we may be aware of before they come in. Um, and, and that's what we try our best to do.
I, I don't wanna beat a dead dog, but I really, I really am, um, curious. Well, I really'd like to see in the future, if we can put it, when we put it out to bid, that that's part of the language, as in, we want to, you come in at this date, if you don't, you have penalties, whatever it is. I'm not legal jargon on that. But I'd like to just see what people can respond to that, as opposed to dealing with it after the fact.
And, and like I said, the date is in the contract as far as when they, you know, are supposed to end by. And, you know, if, if we decide as a district to create some claims against them, we certainly can. Um, it's, it's a matter of, you know, whether it's going to create some legal fees for us to do that.
To enforce that provision, if they violated it, it would cost us legal fees to enforce it. And I think that's what Cindy's, uh, Sandy's sort of suggestion might not be worth. If, if we're gonna pay more to begin with to have that provision, and then we have to pay more to enforce it, how is it important in every contract? Are there some contracts that it might be worth doing? What's been our track record? It might be worth the administration taking a look at and getting some more information, um, on that.
So I certainly understand, uh, with our delays over the last year, those were significant. Um, if you look back over a decade, those have been an exception. But that's, uh, a reasonable thing to, to look at. And if it's, you know, you have to weigh the cost benefit analysis. Okay, then, uh, if there's no more questions, if there are no more questions, we will move on to the consent agenda. And by practice, there's no discussion. We tend to call out any retirements, but we, uh, did that this, uh, at the beginning of the meeting with the many retirements we have this year. So, um, I will take a motion to appro, to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Bruce. Second by Karen. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries six-zero. We'll go on to the action agenda. And the first one is the second reading of, uh, the policy seven ninety-nine, the post issuance debt compliance. It's recommended that the school board approve the second reading of policy, policy seven ninety-nine post issuance debt compliance as presented. Is there a motion, uh, in support of the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Nancy, second. Second by Ken. Uh, any further discussion on that policy? Uh, seeing none, then all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Next is the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school calendar approval. Uh, it's recommended that the school board approve the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school calendar with the start before Labor Day in two thousand sixteen as presented. calendar with the start before Labor Day in two thousand sixteen as presented. Anybody like to make the motion in support of that recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Karen, second.
Second.
Second by Ken. Any further discussion about the calendar? Nancy?
Yeah, just since we've had it come back, I'll just say, as we've already said, this starts after, for two thousand sixteen, a year from this fall, it starts after, it starts before Labor Day, and it, and then school would end earlier, June second. There are two days less for winter break, but there's, it looks like three, but we have the Monday after New Year's off because of the way the holiday falls. And part of what is, what is, I think, driving this hard work on this calendar is that the calendar itself falls weird in some respects for a school educational year. It's that Labor Day comes in late, traditional holidays are on the weekend, and so we've really been able to do, I think, some hard creative work, and we'll see how it goes. I intend to vote for it and hope that it works out for the best. I believe it can and it will, for this particular one-year event. Not setting it up as a pattern for the future, we'll just see how this works.
Okay.
And, and this, as in the conversation that was earlier, would like to see that this is the final one, unless major things occur with government or something.
Anything else?
Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. The third item on our action agenda is the two thousand fifteen health and safety annual budget and report approval. It's recommended the school board approve the two thousand fifteen sixteen healthy, health and safety annual budget and report as presented. Is there a motion to that effect? Moved by Ken.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any further discussion?
All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. D, the approval of school district bids, and we have all three bids in the same motion here, it's, so if you have any questions, you could pull one of them out, but we'll take them as one, and it is one recommendation, that the school board approve the school district bids as presented. The pavement rehabilitation to applied blacktop for one hundred and ninety-five thousand eight forty-six, the aquila tuck pointing to TNT tuck pointing for two hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred, and Central Community Center tuck pointing to JPMI construction. One of these has not got the change in it, right? Is that the one, which is the one that went to building restoration?
That's Central.
That's the one? The last one. So the Central Community Center tuck pointing would go to building restoration, and I'm not going to those documents fast enough to...
That'd be four hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-six.
Four hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-six? I heard you correctly. All right, that is the recommendation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Karen.
Second.
And a second by Bruce. Any further discussion? Then, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the two thousand fifteen sixteen staffing approval for probationary and non-renewal placements, and the first recommendation is a motion that we, the school board waived the reading of the resolution to approve the two thousand fifteen sixteen probationary non-renewal staffing placements as presented. And just a little history, otherwise, we have to read this entire page with a set of names twice, so. Didn't think paper could make that much noise. Is there a motion to that effect? Moved by Nancy.
Second.
Second by Ken. Any further discussion? Then all in favor of the motion to waive the reading of the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? All right, that motion carries, and it is recommended that the school board approve the two thousand fifteen probationary non-renewal staffing placements as presented, and when we vote, that'll be a roll call vote, but is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Motion by Nancy, second by, anyone?
Second.
Karen? Could you call the roll then for the roll call vote? Yeah, I'll ask any questions or comments. You must have one, Ken.
I do, and I think usually this is where Bruce chimes in, but this year, I've noticed quite a few people on there that are gifted, great people, that are being cut out for business reasons, and it's something that happens every year. They do get an opportunity to get their jobs again in the next year, correct? If, but it's still a deal that I'm not real pleased about.
Right, and it is possible, we don't know our budget for next year, so it's always possible that some of these, many of these could be back. It is not pleasant. Other comments or questions from board members? All right, then, roll call vote, please.
Gores?
Aye.
Tatalovich?
Aye.
Richardson?
Aye.
Morrison?
Abstain.
Waters?
Aye.
Schweitzer?
Aye.
And Jimmy Arash is not present.
With that, the motion carries. Five ayes and one abstention. The next item is the proposed, two thousand fifteen proposed unrequested leave of absence approval. It's recommended that the board...
Point of order, can we waive the reading of that resolution as well?
We don't, I believe it's not actually required that we waive the, that we read the resolution. Okay, so if we don't have a requirement that we read the resolution, then the recommendation, this is, just involves one employee, recommended that the board approve the resolution of the proposed placement of Julie Conrad by reducing, replacement of Julie Conrad on the unrequested leave of absence for point two FTE for the two thousand fifteen sixteen school year. Stated that correctly. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Appreciate that, it's not fun to make those motions. Karen, is there a second for that?
Second.
Second by Bruce. Any comments or questions by the board at this one? All right, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? I should, should have asked for abstentions, too, but any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Communications and Transmittels, who has something good to say about exciting things happening? We'll start with Bruce, and we'll just work our way down the line here.
I have two. Number one, I was a little bit late this evening, I did attend the retirement, but I played hooky for the first few minutes of the board meeting to go listen to the Spring Orchestra Concert. To walk into that auditorium and see eighty kids on the stage playing stringed instruments, I did stay only for the first piece, I wish I could have stayed for the whole thing. They played Brahms, and they won. It was just beautiful, and the fact is, there were fifteen cellos, there were four basses, and hundreds of strings, first and second violins. To see that level of beauty, to see our diverse school population participating, it just says a lot for the arts and orchestra at St. Louis Park, and I'm, I was really just proud to watch these, this wonderful performance, and I just enjoyed it so much. The second thing is, I'm not so proud to report on, and that is, most of you are aware, our, before he even received the bill, the governor vetoed the K-12 education bill. Now, that is not necessarily all bad, because the amount of dollars they were talking about was not adequate for what we need. So the governor and the Speaker of the House will meet tomorrow. What I want to recommend is that everyone call the governor's office, call the speaker's office, and let your elected representatives know that you're making these calls, because we need to ensure that our schools are adequately funded. The amounts that we're trying to get to are, the number one priority for us is to increase the formula by at least two percent. If we don't get to two percent, that creates problems for all of the school districts around us, and it creates problems for us. We need that formula for the kids to get increased by at least two percent. The other is to invest in additional resources, and those resources are things like special ed, like English learner funding increased to seven years. There are just a lot of programs out there that the legislature needs to look at and needs to support. And finally, there's the big debate that's going on for the governor. He wants to go to a universal pre-K for four-year-olds. This is a laudable thing, however, I'm not sure it's affordable. So what we think from a district perspective is that we would like to see this money instead go to the school readiness programs that we already support, and fund them adequately so our three-year-olds and four-year-olds can continue to receive the support within our school district. The universal pre-K is a good idea, but the fact of it being universal, that it funds all four-year-olds and insists that they go to school all day, may be an idea which could be difficult for a lot of parents out there. So I'm urging you to let the governor know, number one, we need the formula increased by at least two percent, and finally, the universal pre-K, while it's a good idea, and I laud the governor for it, it is better for us to support the school readiness programs that we already have. Thank you.
Karen?
I want to do a shout-out to our St. Louis Park former poet, laureate Diane Pecoraro, and she had done some work with the community, and it had been a feature of our city school district calendar, but working with a ten-year-old student, Ruby Livon, she was the youngest poet to read her work at this gathering. This was sponsored by Friends of the Arts, and her rhyming poem titled "Spring," in the short to the point poem, she described these wonderful things about spring, and then I said, "I have to clean my room," she said in a deadpan way. And I think it's wonderful that in our community, we still have these opportunities for kids and adults to interact in a really creative way, so I laud Ms. Pecoraro, and our community for supporting Friends of the Arts and taking advantage of these opportunities. By the way, that was Children's First Asset Seventeen Creative Activities.
Anybody else? Nancy?
Yeah, I just want to pick up a bit on what Bruce was saying, and then I have one other point. I think that the proposal that was passed by the House and the Senate had funding in the first year of one point five percent on the formula, and in the second year, two percent, which is awfully close. I'm not, I'm not as unhappy with them as you are, Bruce, I have to say. I think, I think they got awfully close to what, what I was hoping for, but I have similar reservations about the universal pre-K that Bruce expressed. We're still, we're still working on making all-day kindergarten work really well, and adding to our buildings to make that happen, so I, they're close. I hope they can get the deal done in the special session. It is, we're coming up on the end of the school year, and it's, you know, as Bruce alluded to, some of the final concerts are happening, and one of my favorite ones is coming this Thursday. It is the Pops Choir and Senior Recital Concert, and it starts at six, but I think the senior part probably starts closer to seven, and it's just, the seniors in the choir who choose to do so get to sing a solo, and it's just such a delight to watch them really kind of show themselves, and it's often very touching and very fun, and if you have a chance to come, it's really a great event.
The date on that is May twenty-eighth.
And my item to share is from our friends at Bookmark in the Park, and the theme this year is He Rose and She Rose, and they picked the book, I Am Malala, or is it Malela or Malala? Malela, I think. How One Girl Stood Up For Education and Changed the World. And they also have additional adult books, A Town Like Alice, children's chapter books, The Clipfish Code, and Wild River, and then a children's picture book, The Boy Who Changed the World. And they've often worked with our media specialists, but reading is an asset in our community, and certainly something we push throughout the schools, and so Bookmark is a great way to get everybody reading on a similar theme. So with that, if there's nothing else, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Moved by Bruce. A second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Ken. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.